Tonight's meeting. Would you please rise for, well, it's a, today is July the twenty first, it's Tuesday, 2020. The time is now six P M. The regular meeting of the city council, the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For anybody that is listening in, and if you want to comment during our petitions or communications, please chat in or mention something and I can try to recognize you.
Mr. Mayor, I thought about this when we did the beach with Colorado Parks and Wildlife on the neighbors. They have a button, a button on theirs that said, raise your hand.
Yeah.
I don't know if such a feature is available with this, but that would sure be helpful for such a time.
There would be, you know, there, I've been on some other Zoom meetings that they have all kinds of stuff like that. So it, I guess we could, you know, have Mike and have Audrey check into it. Okay, could, we have a roll call, please?
Dubonah?
Here.
Edel?
Here.
Riego?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
You what? Williamson?
Here.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Before we move into that, I'd like to strike five C in the consent agenda. So council, does, does council have any other items that they would like to change or add to the agenda? If not, could have a motion to approve the agenda with the striking of size five, of five C in the consent agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with seven C.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Mike, do we have anything that, from staff that you'd like to report on there?
Nothing to report there, thank you.
All right, thank you. Petitions or communications, I don't have anything in front of me. I don't know if anybody has a comment out there that wants to be recognized. Okay, nothing shows up, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July the seventh, 2020. Item B, adoption of resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to seek funding for next year's stabilization of the Fox West Theater. And, I don't know, Mike, do you want to just give us a minor little briefing on that?
Sure, so, as discussed in council work session, we have an opportunity to go for this grant, two hundred thousand. It ties together with the state historical fund grant, state historical welcome, adding historic tax credits, and a sixty-five thousand dollar match that we put up for that state historical grant. So, whole project would be six hundred and twenty thousand. Just for the interior stabilization, upper pointing of the bricks, fixing some things with the parapets in the roof. And, yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and this was, per the discussion, prioritized to move forward with this, one of the top projects around. Move forward, so.
And I think, Mike, you did mention that sixty-five thousand has already been pre-approved.
That's correct.
We struck item C, and we're on to item D, approval of the bills for one million four hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Item E, approval of the payroll, Ju- July the eleventh, 2020, through July the twenty-fourth, 2020, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Just a moment.
Second?
Second.
Call a roll, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, eight-eight, first reading of an ordinance suggesting the city of Trinidad landfill fees and setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to August the fourth, 2020, at six P M. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I would gladly introduce.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
Uh, I make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Beach? Do you have anything add, to add from our, from what we have in front of us? Is Mr. Beach on?
Uh, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. I'm here, member of council. I really want anything extra, this is what we talked about last Monday at work session. Need to start charging for brush and limb, both from private individuals and from commercial haulers. And the fact that we should start charging for large pieces of furniture, holster furniture, very specific, conscious chairs, address the box spring.
Mr. Goodall, do you have any questions? Mr. Shu, do you have any questions?
No, I sure don't.
Ms. Gregor?
No, sir.
Ms. Ogultry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williamson?
I do not.
Mr. Dubonah?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, call a vote, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Ogultry, I'm sorry, Gregor?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Item eight B, first reading of an ordinance repealing Trinidad municipal code, chapter fourteen, planning, zoning, and reenacting and adopting by reference, city of Trinidad municipal code charter, chapter four, Trinidad land use code, and setting the hearing date for, for consideration of said ordinance to August the fourth, 2020, at six P M. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Mayor, this is Georgie Clark. Uh, thank you.
Let me, let me, let me get a motion on this first, then we'll get into discussion. Georgie, okay? Could I have a motion?
Make a motion, clear.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Georgie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Council, this was updating the municipal code in work session as well. And the only thing I have to add to what you have before you is that if council does approve updating the land use code, we will follow that up by bringing the council on board to include the development and use being scheduled in reference section forty. That's all I really had to add to that, if I have any questions.
Okay. Uh, council, do you have any questions? Mr. Goodall?
I have no questions, just a problem if this is something that I started helping with when I was on PNC. So happy to finally discuss this, uh, with you.
Mr. Shu?
No, I don't have any comments.
Ms. Ms. Gregor?
Uh, no comment, no questions, sorry.
Ms. Ogultry?
No, no questions for me, and I think you've done a really thorough job over doing it in a couple work sessions, and, and they did a good job of summarizing it for us as well.
Mr. Williamson?
Uh, no questions, I agree with Councilwoman Ogultry.
Mr. Dubonah?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time, sir.
Okay. You know, like, like, yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor? I got a staff member, a staff member, that said, we, we were remiss in not introducing the bill. We just did a motion, so we have to introduce first.
I believe I introduced it, and the mayor, okay.
Yeah, he, yes. Somebody did. Uh, you know, like Mr. Goodall said, you know, this is something that's been a long, you know, a long time coming. It's been back and forth, revision, revisions, you know, more and more. We know that we will probably find some areas where we'll have to update periodically, which we can do as they come along. But I think it's, it's a pretty good code, the way it sits right now, and we'll take care of those issues as they arise. So with that being said, could we call a vote, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego? Yes. Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Item C, Fox West Theater development and lease agreement, could have a motion, please?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Les, do you wanna, do you have anything you need to fill us in on?
Mayor, council members, I don't have anything to fill you in on, just to tease this matter up. This is the most recent rendition of this agreement. This comes after many months of negotiating back and forth, city staff in your direction, negotiating primarily with Mr. Chippewa E. with respect to this agreement. And I think the council communication speaks for itself in terms of what it is, what we're doing. Of course, you've had a number of work sessions on, on this as well. And I, I think it, this, I believe, has all of the changes, addresses all of the concerns, and has all the points the council wanted to address during these rather lengthy negotiations. But with that having been said, staff is here answering questions right now.
I'll start with Mr. Goodall, do you have any questions?
I don't, I definitely defer to Mr. Downs and Ms. Ogultry, where they have more legal experience, and they are happy with it, I have definitely missed them.
Mr. Shu?
No, I have no questions.
Ms. Gregor?
I have no questions, just a comment. It's wonderful that we're doing these work sessions because we give all this, we care of it, a work session. And it's pretty nice when the regular meeting comes, so we can breeze through this without having any long issues. Good job, staff, thank you.
Ms. Ogultry?
No questions.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions, I agree with Councilman Goodall and Councilwoman Gregor's comments. Appreciate the work that everybody has put into this.
Mr. Dubonah?
No questions, I also concur with Councilman Goodall and Councilman Gregor.
Uh, today I had a little discussion with Mr. Downs on a couple of items, just to let you know, and this was under the item three, use part of it. And where it read, where more than twenty people may be gathered or in attendance, comma, constructing activities for the rehabilitation of leased premises exempted. I was asking Mr. Downs if maybe where it says, in attendance, that should be a period, and that construction activities for the rehabilitation of leased premises exempted should be one sentence. Did you have any more thought on that, Mr. Downs?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I understand you're wanting to remove the comma between premises and exempted, but what is your other proposed change, the first thing that you suggested?
That was the first, that was the, between the two, basically, where that comma was, and then just leaving that construction activities as a single line, line, or a single sentence.
Okay, yes, and simply removing the comma after premises, is that correct?
Right.
And I think that that's the same meaning, I don't think it changes the, the meaning. I would ask if Mr. Chippewa E. is on, if he has a problem with that proposed change, if he has the agreement in front of him, removing that comma in that paragraph. Are you there, Mr. Chippewa E.?
I am here, and I'm sorry I missed this paragraph we're talking about.
That was, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's paragraph number three, it's the second page, and under use. And it is, in that first full paragraph, the last line there, well, one of the very end, but where it begins, in other legal activities, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, second paragraph down, third from the bottom, leased premises exempted, removing that comma.
Yeah, that comma does not need to be there.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, last, there was a couple other items I'll bring up, and we talked about these today. Was there any more thought, shall we leave it as it is, under casualty, about that part of the substantially destroyed, so that the leased premises are not restorable within sixty days? Either party shall have the right to cancel this lease and end the term, and in case of cancellation, on and on. Were you okay with that finally, or?
Now, I am okay with that, Mayor, and I, I think it's even a limit too. If it were something that could be rectified or corrected within seventy to eighty days, then we decide we have to, or we feel a need to elect that option, to not have a need to cancel it, so I don't feel that any changes are needed
On that part?
for that portion.
Okay, and then the next item was, you know, it states about the five thousand dollars maximum amount that the tenant is liable for. But then the next paragraph, it says that tenant agrees that from and after the rehabilitation period until the lease agreement, lease terminates, it will be responsible for all repairs, maintenance, and replacements. And my question is, should we reference in that part the five thousand dollars as well, or should we leave it as it is?
Mayor, I think we can leave it as it is, because I think the provisions, just they stand alone to address the concern.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to combine the two.
Okay, good. Uh, next one I thought is, this is about the, you know, should tenant fail to remove any furniture, you know, and if something were, if, you know, if agreement was to be terminated at some point in time. I had questioned even during the work session if we should have a timeframe of whether it's thirty days, sixty days, or whatever. Is that something that I think that maybe we should have?
And Mayor, I will tell, well, we'll tell you that I believe that there's an abandonment provision in the great commercial world.
There is.
Exactly, but, okay, if they do not retrieve it, you know, God forbid they should end badly, if they don't return their items in a, in a timely fashion, then those items are taken up there.
Okay, what is?
I would think.
What is, what is, what is that abandonment period?
Um.
Maybe that, maybe that should be addressed.
Uh, Mr. Chippewa E., do you recall what the abandonment period is? If you don't get your, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't recall exactly what the abandonment period is, but, but that whole process, there are multiple notices, and so there would be many different notices given, and it's, if I, if I'm recalling it correctly, I'm trying to look for it, and I'm not grabbing it. I believe there's a minimum of thirty days before there would be an abandonment, an notice of recall given. And so, there's an entire process that's going on, and Fox West Theater would, they have a potential not responded, so I don't think we run into any issues.
Okay. You know, the, the reason why I brought that up was I just didn't want that, you know, something would sit around for, you know, two, three years, and, and still sitting there and claimed afterwards. That was, that was my, my question. Uh, the next item is on page, or item twenty-three, representations of warranties. Item five talks about if owner fails to appropriate funds required to be paid, under this agreement, this agreement can be terminated at the end of the fiscal year for which funds have been appropriated. Now, you know, it says in there that in, in, in early part of the lease agreement, that it says that if there is funding that maybe the city of Trinidad cannot afford, that that needs to making, be taken into consideration. So I was wondering if where it says the agreement can be terminated, should we have in there possibly should be terminated or extended such time when funds become available? That's what I was thinking about there.
Um, Mayor, I think that means a possibility, however, it affords us the election of being able to say that we, we don't want to go forward if that becomes a concern, so that we, we don't have to exercise that option if we elect not, if, if that makes sense.
Okay.
I don't believe your suggested language is necessary.
Okay. Uh, with, I think that was all that I had. I don't know of the questions that I brought up. Does anybody on council have any questions about, does anything arise from what I brought up?
No.
Okay. That being said, let's go ahead and call a vote, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes.
Riego? Riego?
I think we lost her.
Ogultry?
Yes, I, I, I bad, I bad, you know, I'm sorry.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes, uh, Ms. Gregor, was that Y A?
That was Y E A.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay, on to item D, extraterritorial one-inch water tap request filed by Steve and Renee Crowe at eleven five-thirty South Oak Street, could have a motion, please?
Someone?
So I guess we have a second or two?
Thank you.
Uh, discussion, Mr. Vigil, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Can you fill us in a little bit?
Yes, I will. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Steve and Renee Crowe, they request a one-inch extraterritorial water tap just from Sugar Island, located at eleven five-thirty South Oak Street, which is on the very end of Oak Street, on the dead end up there. On that, we normally flush that three or four times a year to keep the water safe to drink. And if the council approved this tap, that would actually aid the water department in wasting that much fresh water, generating revenue for the city of Trinidad Water Department.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Mr. Goodall?
No, sir.
Mr. Shu?
No.
Ms. Gregor?
No, sir.
Uh, Ms. Ogultry?
No questions.
Mr. Williamson?
I have one quick question, will that totally eliminate all dead-end lines on the, on that line?
That would be the last water, that lot is the last lot on that lot, so that would be the very last tap on that, that lot.
Okay.
There'll still be a dead-end line, we'll still need to flush, but we won't have to flush as much water, but that lot is the last lot on that lot, on the other street.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Dubonah?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have no questions, call a vote, please?
Dubonah?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes. On to item nine, council reports. Start with Mr. Goodall?
So, the only thing I, I guess I do, and I know you'll probably touch on this, so I'll be pretty brief. We did have a chance to testify at the Colorado Parks and Wildlife on behalf of the, the state park, Fisher's Peak State Park, Pete, Mike, the mayor, and all the county commissioners who were there. They were ready to make a motion and vote on it, to go ahead and name it without a seat of testimony. So I think they were anxious to get this wrapped up. And if anyone just had a question, it is obviously named, or Fisher's Peak State Park. And second, me and the mayor, I also had the honor to have lunch with the new Garrison Commander, Colonel.
Springer?
Springer. And he, you know, is taking over for Colonel Wording, who, we had a really good working relationship, and I'm hoping we have the same for our, our, our short distance, the other day, because it's gonna continue to be a great working relationship with the Army at Fort Hurst. That's what I have.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
No, I don't have anything, I just, I.
Okay, Ms. Gregor?
Uh, Councilwoman Ogultry and I went to the P D department, uh, the police department today, because we wanted to be, we wanted to be enlightened about code encoding enforcement. Officer Haddo and Chief Glorioso were very accommodating, and they sat there for about a little over an hour and explained it to us. We bounced ideas back and forth to each other about how could we can, um, trim down the process and make it a little bit more effective. And that's all I'm gonna say, and I'll let Ms. Ogultry say the rest.
Okay.
And nothing else.
Ms. Ogultry?
Um, yeah, basically what Ms. Riego just said, and that we love the idea, we always be happy to hear, and they had ideas of how we could, through all of this, streamline things and make things more efficient. It was a very helpful education for me, I know, and I'm happy to share with whatever, I, whatever I know with any of the new council people that would like to know. And then this afternoon, I went, I went to an online Zoom presentation that Marty Hackett invited someone from the city council and from this area to attend concerning the regional branding initiative that the Colorado Tourism Office has put together over the last few years. And you all, I'm sure, are much more aware than I am, and back in twenty eighteen, the state broke the state down into about eight different areas, regions, that they wanted to kind of clarify the tourism message and to help those regions think through how they marketed themselves. We were put into the Canyons and Plains section down in the southeast corner of the state. And there are some parts of it that I think, speaking, not to speak for Marty, but also for myself, I think that fit some that don't. But the most interesting thing, I think, that, that I got out of it is that they had figured out through a lot of really intensive research, that the typical person who's interested in coming to this part of country, in this part of Colorado in particular, is, they classify as a cultural history bud. And that means someone who does their own research and doesn't need to be guided, you know, point by point to everything. They know what they're looking for, but they would like to have direction to historically significant things that are in our region. And I, having just attended the last few weeks ago, the bicycle tourism presentation, thought a really nice tie-in, if we took this upon ourselves to continue this thing, would be to have a bike tour that was based around the historical things that have happened in our part of the state, so that people could go from one thing to another, and that would, those two tourism routes, both the educated, cultural history bud, and the recreational tourist, I think we'd get a lot out of that, and it would be a really nice draw. I volunteered to help with some aspect, as they could hone the message for our area, and so I'll stay on top of that. But I, I really enjoyed. and so I'll stay on topic now. But I really enjoyed the presentation, and I was well done.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I just have two things to note. I have my first Council of Government Board meeting on Thursday, so we're looking forward to that, and going through the package to get prepared for that. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request a future work session for what I'd like to think is a unique idea that would help increase resources for the PD, for most notably enforcement in the downtown area, and some of the, may help with some of that area. I don't, I don't think it'd be a long ask for time, but I'd like to just have a formal plan to be able to, and time to be able to.
Mr. DeBono?
Well, I guess this would constitute part of the council reports. I received a call about a week and a half ago from Jess Gibson. He's on the board of the four wounded veterans board, and he wanted to know if I wanted to serve on the board. It's, it means the first Monday of every month at 5:00, and I spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, about that. It's not on the list of standing boards, committees, or commissions, but I feel it's, it's, I think it'd be advantageous if one city council member would fill that seat. I don't think it would conflict unless they asked for money from the city, and I would have, probably have to admit myself from voting on anything pertaining to that. So I just wanted to make your thoughts about that.
The only thing I could think of is if it's at 5:00, you'd have to watch, because that is usually the date that we have our work session, so that may be, you know, conflict of the dates itself, so the time. So that would be something.
I spoke to Roderick, and she said the second, fourth, and, and I know this is on the first Monday, but if it conflicts, I will deny that, and I will be on the part of that.
Well, I think that, you know, you don't necessarily have to admit yourself, but you may have to miss a meeting or two if they should, so desired. And I know that's something that's probably, something that you would like to do, something because your father was so involved with the vets in town, so, you know, go ahead and give that some consideration. I think it'd be maybe well worth it, but yeah, I don't have an issue with it. I don't think council does either. I don't know if I mentioned this the last time, these weeks go by pretty quick. We talked to Joe Terrabino, and he gave us a lot of information on Fisher's Peak, some historic stuff, and it was pretty interesting, and we sat down to talk to him for probably a good 40 minutes, and he gave us a bunch of information about Fisher's Peak and its involvement, and how it evolved from Fisher's Peak and to where it's at, and just recently. But it was just interesting just to listen to him. You know, over the last couple of weeks, of course, I've been fielding calls and talking to people about that Fisher's Peak name change, and of course, it has now been put to bed as of last Thursday when, you know, we all testified, and like Mr. Goodall said, that there was a gentleman who, right at the beginning, he said he was ready to make a motion to approve, so it was just Brett Ackerman, who is from the CPW, he did give a pretty good history of the, of the park and where it is today. So he, it was interesting just to listen to him. Also, met with a gentleman by the name of Kevan, I think it's Calit Barry. I was introduced to him by our economic development director, and he's someone that has come to Trinidad and very interested. He's purchased some properties here in Trinidad for, one property to rehabilitate it and some other areas. He's bought some properties, I think, to build homes, which would be filling. So he's looking at Trinidad very positively, so it was good to hear that someone has that interest. And like I said, we, you know, we all called in on that CPW, called in for the naming, and that went very, very well. Like Mr. Goodall said, we met Colonel Nathan Springer, who is the new person down here in Proppino Canyon. They seem to be very energetic, and I think we'll have a good relationship with him. And there were several of us that, you know, county commissioners, and Mr. Goodall, and Mike, and myself, we had an opportunity to have lunch with him, so that was good to see. See if I have anything else. I just wanted to mention that, you know, I really am happy that Ms. Ogletree, you and Karen, took the time to go and talk to the PD and get some clarification on, you know, the code enforcement. I know that was something that you brought up last time, and I mentioned that, you know, to get with him, and, you know, it's something that, one-on-one is the best way to handle something like that, because it sounds like you had some, you came away with some questions, and it would be interesting to hear what maybe some of the recommendations or they came out of it with, so that'd be good. You might run them by Mike, and then he could run them by the rest of us, so that we have an idea as to what the discussion was, and just to know what, you know, what the thoughts were there. So I'm glad that you guys, really I'm glad that you did that. Yes?
I'm sorry, our esteemed city manager was there as well.
Okay, good.
So he could.
But it would be good to see if anything, what came out of it, and what items might, you know, Charlie might be looking at for changes, and we'll see what it goes for. That's all I have. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was there, took some notes, need to do some research on ordinance and make sure we run it by Les, and then wait, and it will get to a due process through the whole process of code enforcement, and we'll bring something forward probably sooner. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, other than another press release from Mr. Wallace tonight. I'll send it on to you. We have two more positives in Los Angeles County. A 60-year-old male and a 30-year-old female. And then Werfino County has another one, an 80-year-old male. So, not good news, but, but we just need to be diligent, do everything possible. We may add more in towards, and if we do, our areas is maybe pulled from, from by the government like that. So, bad news to report, that's all, that's all I have.
In addition to that, I do know that Kim is working on that protect your neighbor phase, and she's supposed to, you know, involve the city of Trinidad as far as discussion, because there needs to be a discussion between the county commissioners from both Werfino and Trinidad, and Los Angeles County, as well as the city of Walsenburg, as well as the city of Trinidad. So supposedly, she was gonna try to maybe have a first discussion this week. I haven't heard from her yet. It sounded like Mike maybe you haven't either, but that is something that's coming our way. Hopefully that we get some input. This thing is beginning to grow some serious legs, very concerning to all of us, and we just need to do what we have to do, because we sure need to, we sure don't need it to ramp up to the point where a hospital cannot handle the number of patients that may be going in. Hopefully that we can keep that at bay. That's all I've got on that part. Mr. Downs, do you have anything today?
Mayor, very briefly, Mayor, Councilmember, so thank you. I want to say to Councilwoman Ogletree and Grego, and Mr. Valentine for going as well, thank you for going down there to have your questions regarding code enforcement answered by Sergeant Haddow and Chief Correia. So I, that is just such a preferred way of doing things, when you have questions to go down there and, you know, your questions answered, rather than, you know, bringing them in through a dress council. I know you've learned on that subject. It just feels a little calling on the carpet-ish. And again, you've learned on them, it's very nice. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you this afternoon. It was this afternoon, so, okay, so I'm sorry I wasn't able to go with you, but I thank you very much for having done that. The only other thing I will say, and I'm gonna hate myself in the morning for saying this, I'm kidding, but I will have a draft ordinance on hospitality clubs, hospitality facilities for marijuana consumption by your next work session. And Mayor, I wanted to tell you that Kevon, and I'm sorry, his last name is difficult to pronounce.
It is.
I talked to him as well. It is, and I, I'm sure I'm butchered by tribe, but Mr. Wallace, I voted in conference hall for Mr. Wallace, and Kevon, I'm sorry for using his first name, not his last name, but for the three of us to chat, and he's supposed to be at some length. And so anyway, that kind of relates to the whole, the whole hospitality marijuana issue. This is a big proposal of that, just so you know. I'm not saying that's where I'm coming from, but it is time, I'm going to get that in front of you and have that for your consideration in the work session, before having a proposed ordinance for your consideration. I am hoping that the next one will be, but I just wanted to let you know for the next work session.
Okay.
Any, any questions, any?
No, no, you know, I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. We've had a little bit of discussion on it already, but I'll talk to you briefly, by yourself and I. I'll give you a call sometime. Okay. Council have anything else that you thought of before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Approved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, call, call roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Edel?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Good meeting, guys, and good night. Take care, be safe, be healthy. We'll see you Monday.
Be.
Good night.
Good night.